The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I call the special board meeting to order and I want entertain the first motion.
I move that the employment of Nicole Schubert, Supervisor of Special Education, 12 months at the district office, a salary of $69,341, prorated to $65,074. Group 11, 86 percentile, 2016, 17 step, effective July 25th, 2016, as presented here.
Second.
Nicole couldn't be with us today, but you have a resume and you'll see that she has a long history of special education experience, starting as a teacher in Cross-Cabin. Her current job is in Fond du Lac as a special education instructional coach.
And she is replacing...
She is one of our new positions. She's the fourth of four special ed supervisors that we're hiring. Three of them you voted on last month and they came from within the district.
That was part of the restructure.
Randy?
Becker?
Hi.
Lekka?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Jan?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Karen 7-0. Did during, I always forget. One more motion. Oh, no, sorry.
I move that the employment of staff is presented to be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Jan?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Lekka?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Karen 7-0. An entertain a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, we started. Oh, one minute. First, we have time for a public forum. That's a time for members of the community to speak before the board. We have two speakers tonight who would like to speak. First, I'll call on Lori Kathy.
Lori Kathy, N4606, County Road F, Fond du Lac. At our, at the last board meeting, I shared some information with you regarding the community eligibility provision, and I just wanted to follow up with a little bit of additional information that you should have in front of you. The Hunger Task Force has helped dozens of school districts across Wisconsin enroll in CEP and find ways to make sure more kids have access to school meals. Hunger Task Force was one of six organizations across the country to receive a grant to increase participation in school breakfasts from Share Our Strengths No Kid Hungry Campaign, a national organization set up to end childhood hunger. Through this, Hunger Task Force is willing to provide materials, resources, and guidance to the Green Bay School District that will allow schools to serve more meals to students. The district will not have to apply for any grant. Hunger Task Force would purchase the equipment that the district requests, as long as it's related to feeding more kids. The process is simple. The school district requests equipment for their schools, the Hunger Task purchases them, and it can either be shipped directly to the buildings themselves or to a central location. What I had Sandy pass out is just kind of a sample of what one of the schools that they worked with requested. You can see that there's refrigeration units, heating units, tablets to make it more accessible for students to get breakfast in the morning and lunch. Hunger Task Force is also willing to provide some ongoing support to the food service program to make sure that it's successful throughout the school year. And I wanted to thank Dr. Langenfeld for working with me over the weekend, late nights, to kind of hopefully move this forward. I am meeting with Lynette, the Food Service Director, on Wednesday to share the information with her as well. So hopefully, as soon as an order can be put together, it can be ordered and set for the beginning of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori. And next, I have Kevin Lowline.
That's Greg.
Sorry. Can you just state your name and address?
My name is Ken Lowline, and I live at 2266 Sunrise Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54302. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Green Bay Advocates for Public Education. We support your efforts to bring CEP to, from three schools to all the 16 schools that qualify. We support you 100 percent. And even though you probably are all familiar with the information that I have in front of me, I would like to just read it into the record, if that'd be okay. One thing I wanted to comment on is a campaign that was done in Maryland, and it was called the No Kid Hungry Campaign. And since 2011, more than 130 Maryland schools are in the process of moving breakfast from the cafeteria to the classroom. Participation in the school breakfast program in Maryland increased from 46 percent in September 2010 to more than 56 percent in September 2012. As a result, more than 30,000 additional children are getting a healthy school breakfast each day. There was a study done entitled Ending Childhood Hunger: A Social Impact Analysis, and this study shows that in the few years since they moved breakfast out of the cafeteria and made it part of the school day, schools are seeing as much as 7.2 percent lower rate of chronic absenteeism. Students are up to 12.5 percent more likely to achieve proficiency, excuse me, on standardized math tests. Of course, long-term, kids who spend more time in school are more likely to graduate from high school and more likely to be employed and at a higher yearly income. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda, but first, I'd like to acknowledge that we have all seven board members present tonight. Also to my left, we're joined by the table by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our Superintendent, and Grace Sinclair, who is the Intercity Student Council President, who comes from Preble. And then also Sandy Heller, our Board Executive Assistant. Next, we'll move to our Teaching and Learning Work Session, and I'll pass that on to Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. It's the rare day that we don't have any discussion items. Respectfully conclude that.
All right. Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll move on to Organizational Support Work Session, and that will be facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Thank you. Nothing under Business and Finance, however, under Human Resources, we do have a couple items with that, Mrs. Marsh.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the Employee Handbook Changes, and I think you provided with a description of the changes as well as a strikeout version of the change, and then how the change would read, should the board approve these changes next week. So Randy, we'll step you through just some of the highlights of each one, and we'll maybe pause it between so that if there are questions, you can ask them, if you have any.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. If you look at the table contents that I provided, the page numbers reflect the more the handbook language would currently exist in the handbook today. So if you happen to have a copy of the handbook, you could have found that. The first one would be taking place on page 12. This is under Equal Opportunity Employment. The change is that the reference to Human Resources Department would be changed to District Equity Coordinator because per board policy, the District Equity Coordinator is the person who would conduct that investigation, not Human Resources. So we're only asking to correct it to be board, comply with board policy.
Questions?
Just a point of clarification, the acquisition then reports to whom?
The District Equity Coordinator reports to the Associate Superintendent, Associate Director, and that would be...
Former Jennifer Kriggs.
Jennifer Kriggs.
Kriggs, I'm sorry.
And it is now...
Tony.
Tony.
Oh.
Thank you.
The next one would be on page 28, under Workers' Compensation. We're asking to strike out the existing language that was in there and adding in what we, what you would see as in red. The main change in there is that currently, the language says that a person must submit the accident report within 24 hours. There's no legal requirement for an employee to have to report that within 24 hours, but we want them to do it as soon as possible. There may be physical reasons a person is unable to file that report, so we want that language just to reflect the fact that it should be done as quickly as possible. We also recognize there's no language in there that talked about the return to work. So we put references as to what we would do to work with employees who are off on workers' comp in an attempt to get them back to work as soon as possible, and if there's a need for us to, to look for an alternative site for them to work because of work restrictions, we would do so. Any questions with that?
Thank you.
The next section ties right directly to this, is the Accident Incident Report. Again, it changes the within 24 hours to report and changes it to the as soon as possible. So it's consistent with the language for the workers' compensation as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next one is under, on page 30, under the Child Abuse Reporting. What we recognize is that under State DPI, it actually is referred to as Mandatory Reporting of Child Abuse and Neglect, not Child Abuse Reporting. So we're going to change the title of that section to reflect what DPI requires. And then at the, in the last paragraph, we're striking out the section in there about training within the first six months because our practice since January of 2015 is all new employees going through the New Employer Orientation are required to undergo the mandatory child abuse reporting and neglect video through DPI, so we've taken care of it there. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question on that one. The last line, when they receive the initial training at New Employer Orientation, at least once every five years after that initial training. I understood it was, was practice, and obviously not in the handbook, but understood it was practice that every school received some refresher on it at the, at their initial staff meeting. Should that be reflected in there?
Well, I, I think that that's practice for the schools when it comes to the educators, but it hasn't been the practice for all other employees. So we could put that in there. You know, I think there's a need for us to be more proactive in doing that kind of training, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's for every employee, though, that it's done annually. I think it's done at the school level.
Well, there should, I, I, my, my feeling on it is that there should be something in the handbook that states for all employees who are mandated reporters, which is basically everybody, that, you know, certainly initial training at New Employer Orientation, but there should be a refresher every year. While the laws don't change all that often, I think that refresher is necessary.
We, we don't track that currently as we, as we track the new employees, and we, we will be approaching in 2017, the five-year mark when this law went into effect, but we don't...
It would be on the agendas, the principals' building agenda, their meeting agenda.
But for example, the substitutes don't come in, the new norer supervisors, the very part-time people aren't there. And it is on the agenda because I did, I did see that, we had, we checked into that, but there's no attendance that's being taken that is turned into us to make sure that everybody in the district received it. So this is reflecting what's the law, the mandatory part of it. But we do provide it in the buildings, however, if somebody happens to be absent that day, I'm not sure if they, how they get it.
I, I agree with you. What I'm doing this year for the Back-to-School Orientation for our New Norers Monitors and our PERS is they are actually going to have somebody come in and do a, a little refresher course on the child abuse and reporting because I acknowledge and recognize exactly what you're saying, that it would be beneficial to have the employees much more aware of what their responsibilities are.
Doesn't everybody have to sign off on something every year regarding bloodborne pathogens, all employees?
They do through safe schools.
I'm sorry?
You do it electronically.
Yeah. Okay, well...
Yeah. It could be done through safe schools, I suppose.
I, let's, let's, let's follow up on it because I think Mr. Dorf is making a very important point, and clearly, there are ways we could address this. It is very important. So we can come back and then we'll give you an update, a Friday update, and let you know.
We know that the rates of abuse and neglect are not decreasing. They're, it's a problem that's not getting any better, so...
I think there's ways to do it.
I agree.
I mean, it might be electronic, but at least we do the bloodwork.
The next section is on page 42 of the handbook, under Operators of District Vehicles, Mobile Equipment, and Persons Who Receive Travel Reimbursement. You can see the strikeout is the strikeout of the title that was formerly the Chief Financial Officer and the inclusion of the new language for the CFO. And then under the, in the very last piece on transporting students, there's actually a reference in there that has nothing to do with transporting students. It has to do with time travel between buildings by employees going back and forth for multi-school employment, so we're asking to strike that out because it doesn't apply to the transporting student language.
And that already exists somewhere else?
Well, it, it, I don't know if it still exists. I went and I, I got the, the old contract language. Once upon a time, there was language that said that if an educator was traveling between multiple buildings, that they would be given a minimum of 15 minutes between each building to travel between. We have no language, I think, that says that any longer, but we've consistently applied that going forward. If you feel that would be necessary to put into the handbook, we could add that language.
Yes?
I mean, it seems like it would be...
I mean, we're, we are doing it.
We do it.
We're providing time for the teachers to travel between their assignments, but it isn't in, it isn't in the handbook. If this was, it's not somewhere else in the handbook, and it's not in any board policy that I'm aware of.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I, I think that, I, I don't see any reason why, just because maybe a good idea was in the wrong place, that it should just be striking. I'd like, I would like to see that be in there somewhere else. I think it's, I'm sure it's, I'm sure if it was a problem for people, I would have heard about it by now, so it probably isn't, but this, you know, any, I'm, I just don't like ideas where we, you know, verbally, you know, we sit around, verbally agree, nod our heads, and then all of a sudden, it's not in writing, and there, when there's an issue a couple of years down the road. So I'd like to see that stay in the handbook in a, in a, wherever would be appropriate.
We could probably find a place where it would fit better than under Student Transportation because it's really about adequate time between school assignments.
Yeah.
That's, that's, we'll find a, we'll find a place.
We could even move it up into the first paragraph, which is actually talking about people who are driving...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Getting mileage reimbursement. I can just move it up into there, then we don't lose the language.
Does that make sense? Just move it up?
Okay. The last one's a little bit more detailed, but it doesn't, it appears that there's a lot of language changes, but the reality is that we've had a practice for applying our Income Protection Plan, which is our self-funded version of a Short-Term Disability Plan. We've had the application of this for years, but we've really never spelled out how it was supposed to look. So what we actually had in the current handbook, the reference to the IPP is in three different sections. It's in, in Part 2 for educators, Part 3A for paraprofessionals, and Part 3B for the, what I call the Ask Me Units. And it's similar, but it, it was in three different areas. So what we did is we, we worked with Melissa Field Coller, and we came up with language that would pull it all into the very first piece. So what you're looking at is the strikeout of the three different sections, and then the proposed new language that's all in red at the end there. Have you had a chance to look it over? Do you have any questions regarding that?
Thank you.
Next.
And that's, that is it for proposed changes to the handbook at this point in time.
Next, Ms. Marsh.
The next item is a recommendation for volunteer background checks. As, as you've read through the memo, we're recommending a company called Background Investigation Bureau, LLC, as a vendor for back, volunteer background checks. Randy can just kind of explain what we did and why we recommend this company.
Our current practice is that we have an employee who does the volunteer background checks manually. What happens is that a person comes into a school building asking to be a volunteer. They fill out the, the form at the building. The form gets faxed down to Human Resources. We have a person who takes it and manually goes out to the sites that we have, the state site, federal sites, to pull that background information in. We then have to go back and process that out. We have to send it back to the building for notification of whether the employee's been approved, or the person has been approved for volunteering or not. What we're asking for is, with this company, we're going to be able to push all this out automatically. It's going to go out onto the district website, so a person who wants to volunteer would be able to go out to the website, would be able to click on a link, enter their information in, and it would instantly begin doing that volunteer background for us. The schools also would have the ability to see all of those live in motion in real time as they're going through. And they say it's like a two to four-day turnaround. Ours has been anywhere from four days to four weeks, depending on the, the volume we get. We do over 2,500 volunteer backgrounds every year. It's very time-intensive, and we've had one employee who's been doing this for the last few years, essentially as their sole job, about 25 to 28 hours a week that they've been doing, doing during the school year, and that wouldn't be necessary any longer. So our hope is that we would be able to use this program to automate the process, to expedite it, and to make it much more efficient for the schools and much more efficient for Human Resources as well.
Mr. Becker?
Randy, do we check on volun, the same volunteer every year? Do they have background check every year, or is there a time period where we check volunteers?
Yeah, we do it every two years. We're required to go back through a volunteer background check.
Now, is there a cutoff for, let's say, a volunteer, whether it's a parent or just someone else from the community that comes in an hour a month to help the teacher? Does that, do we still check that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have someone that wants to come in one day, one time, to volunteer in their child's classroom, the child's building. We will offer them the opportunity if they pass the background check.
And how do we inform, I know it's pretty rare, how do we inform a parent who you uncover something where we don't want them in the school? How do you tell a parent that they can't come into their child's school?
The process now is, is essentially, we just email back to the building saying this person's not been cleared to volunteer in the building. If a parent has questions regarding that, however, we give out our number, and I, I field multiple calls during the course of a school year for, for parents who are asking a volunteer, wanting to know why. And when I get those phone calls, we document why it took place. Oftentimes, we, we may actually go into a little further review. Sometimes they're very complicated and very difficult, and I'll bring in a committee. I'll have Melissa come in, Jean, we've even gone so far as having Dr. Langenfeld and Kim Powell be part of these discussions in the past. Some of them are very easy, some of them are very complicated, and we want to make sure we're doing things right to make sure that our, our kids are safe.
Now, a parent can still come to conferences?
Yeah. We, I, I get that call a lot from parents. A parent is never going to be denied to do the things that a parent has a right to do. As long as there's nothing legally that prevents them from having contact with their child, they're still going to be able to come into the building.
If it's a custody problem, then...
Right, yeah. They can still have lunch with their child if they're eating with their child. It's the participation with other people's kids that they're not allowed to do in a volunteer capacity.
Okay.
Couple of questions, if I may. The background check is a background check, you know, then somebody has to set up the filters as to what is inappropriate. And I, I guess, right now, if I understand it right, that's done down in Human Resources. Now, if it's on, done automatically via the system applying online, and I assume in there the person knows that there's going to be a background check, is that correct? They probably have to sign off on it in some way. And what, what happens then if there's something that we've determined as a district is not acceptable in terms of allowing somebody to be a volunteer? Where does that go in terms of this automated process? Is that, I'll just let you explain that.
That's a great question. What's going to happen in this? We have to, we have the opportunity to kind of create how we want that company to work with us. I think at least initially, we probably have 90 to 95 percent of the volunteer backgrounds that we, we get are cleared all the way through. There's nothing. And if that's the case, the company's simply going to flag that they're clear and they're going to come back through. The way it works now is if there's a question that comes up, they go to me, and then Jean will pick up some of the spare ones, where I actually go through and I review them myself, page by page. We have some criteria that we use, that we, we use to decide whether or not a person should be allowed to volunteer or not. We worked with that with Melissa as well to develop that because we wanted to make sure that we weren't imposing a higher standard than, than what you would expect. But that's the piece that gets real time-intensive, but I, that will still happen to me. What, what'll go on is, is I'll be able to go out every day and check, and a person who's been flagged by the company that they have something that showed up on the background check will still remain in a cache, that I'll have to go out and take a look at that, and then I would have to make the decision whether or not that person should be allowed to volunteer or not, and then ultimately, if it has to go to a higher level, then I would schedule the time to bring that forward. The school, my understanding what the school will see is a list of everybody at their building who's applied, and they'll see with a flag whether or not they've been cleared, or whether or not they're pending, or they're denied. And if it's pending, they wouldn't be able to volunteer, obviously. If they're denied, they would simply let them know that they've been denied, and if they have questions, they should contact me.
Anything that is, any hit, anything that shows will automatically come up for review. Even if it's a municipal violation, you know, something like OWI's flag, we'll review every one of them, just as we do, except it'll be electronic, not, not paper.
So then in, in the new process, the building administrator would get ahold of the, the person and say, "You've been denied." Does that person, building administrator, know the reason why, or are they just...
They won't have access to that confidential information at the school level. The only place that'll get that confidential level of information is at HR. If the, oftentimes, I will call up an administrator and say, "Hey, you have a person here who five years ago had a series of forgeries, and they're asking a volunteer, and it's not necessarily something that would have excluded them from being a volunteer. How do you feel about this person coming in there? And if you agree that maybe that would be okay, you might want to consider not having them run the money box if they've had problems with, with financial things in the past." But we have a lot of conversations at the building level with administrators when we have flags that come up.
And you did say you document everything as you go?
Do we document everything?
Everything as you go.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Randy, do you have, if the company makes a mistake and clears somebody, are they held responsible? Suppose someone is cleared by that company, and, and then something comes up later? What is the responsibility of the company on that?
They do have the responsibility. That's why we pay them to do the service.
Right, but they're held, we're held accountable?
They would be, the company would be held accountable if they miss something that was blatantly obvious.
Will the, the process for initiating this change at all, or will the, the buildings will still refer all the names to you? How's this going to work? Are they going to do it directly?
No, what'll happen is my, in a perfect world, they would just simply tell the person who wants to volunteer, "Go out to our district website, click on Volunteer Opportunities," and there's a link that takes them directly into the site.
Oh, so the individual will go into it themselves?
The individual does it all. The school, no longer have to deal with it. They won't have to take the information, they won't have to fax it, they don't have to wait for it to come back.
Oh.
All that'll be taken out of their hands.
That's how we do our employees know with another company, and it works very well. The employee can do it right, right at home, and we can see immediately when they've done it. It's timestamped down to the minute. And the feedback comes back to the district? Yes. We, we pull it up, we can see it electronically.
Minor point. I, I realize there's still some people that don't use computers, let alone know how. Is there some sort of statement given to the volunteers or others, "If you need help with that, talk to me," or so-and-so? Just, I mean, because some people, I think, would be embarrassed to ask, unless that was out there initially.
I could, I could foresee just giving them a sheet with the website, some information, and then where to call if they need help. They could always come to our, our department, but if, I, I would assume that the secretaries right in the school would be able to help them as well.
Could you provide the volunteers with a volunteer guideline as well? That was drafted a few years ago. It would make sense that we would hand it right out with that. Here's the guidelines for being a volunteer, and here's the information if you need help getting onto this, here's what you need to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I have a question. What about a volunteer who doesn't read?
What about a volunteer who doesn't read? Do you have a parent who wants to volunteer?
We could, we could read it for them.
Okay.
Sure.
You can tell sometimes when they come through and a person has some limitations. You know, the writing's not clear, or the secretary will actually fill it out for them, and they'll just sign it. That does happen once in a while, so yeah, we would certainly want to assist that person.
Just so that, that opportunity is...
Any other questions, comments? One last comment. I find it extremely impressive that you have twenty-five hundred of these to do a year. So we, in essence, have as many volunteers approximately as we do have employees. That, that, I think, says well for our community, willing to help our kids, and I do appreciate that. Thank you. That is all? Thank you.
All right. It's not even six o'clock yet. We have a closed, closed session. I'll read the motion for that. Special Board Meeting, closed session is scheduled for Monday, July eleventh, 2016. Immediately following adjournment of the closed session meetings. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five-one-C, concerning employee performance evaluation data, employer, government body, extrastationary exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five-one-F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data specific persons preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data involved in such bodies or investigations, to wit, personnel matters. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five-one-E, deliberating or negotiating with interest in public properties, investment of public funds, protecting other specified government business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, potential contracts. In pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five-one-G, considering with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit, potential litigation matters. The meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for closed session supervised by the law.
Still move?
Second.
Aye.
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 Karen seven zero.